If you'd all please rise, the invocation will be by Pastor Bill Foppel with St. Mary's Episcopal Church. Welcome and good evening, sir.
Thank you.
On this Ash Wednesday, yes. Wherever you're comfortable, but this would be fine. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious God, for those here who are Christian, we have entered into the season of Lent this day. It is a time of sober reflection for us as we seek to be better citizens, better living and seeking to live in harmony with one another. I give you thanks this day for those who have been called from among us to serve this community. And I ask your special blessing upon them this evening as they deliberate, deliberate the business at hand. That you will give them wisdom. That where there is the time for deliberation, that they will hear one another and come to decisions that are of the best benefit for us all. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Dewitt, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
With pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Here.
Councilman Dewitt?
Present.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're all well and on this Ash Wednesday. We're going to start with public comment on agenda items and I'm just reminded, if you would like to speak, please remember to fill out a card so that we have your information for all proper follow-up, please. So, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. John Paino, Downtown Benita Alliance and CGT Kayaks here in Benita Springs. I just wanted to take a short second to support item 9A on your agenda today. Saying that November is actually the best time for elections when people are here and when we've already set aside money and funds to take care of it and not having special elections costs. Secondly, I'd just like to say if you didn't go down to Benita Springs Riverside Park this past weekend, you really missed a big, beautiful time. The park looked awesome. The new deck on the waterfront is just tremendous. And just wanted to say thank you to the city and city parks for what a great job they did.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
I did not fill out a card, but am I allowed to speak?
Of course.
All right.
Just please do so prior to leaving. Thank you, sir.
I will. My name's Dwight Essman. I also want to ask a question. Will I be allowed to speak again before you take the vote on the change of election date?
There will be three opportunities to speak throughout the meeting, yes, sir.
All right.
Right now and two other times.
All right. I wrote a letter to the editor that was in the Friday Naples Daily News and the Saturday Benita Banner. In case you didn't see it, I want to read it to you. Four of the seven members of the Benita Bay City Council have decided they want to extend their terms by eight months and $10,000. From March of 2020 to November of 2020. They don't want to send it to the voters so that we can decide. They claim that a November election will increase voter participation. But last week, two members told us the real reason. They're afraid they can't get out their voters for just local issues. There are many reasons not to extend the terms in office without voter approval beyond it being unethical. Turnout in March has been strong in the past. In the summer and early fall, when candidate forums, town halls and debates could take place, many voters are still up north. The unknown and underfunded candidate is at a huge disadvantage if voters can't attend these events. A move to November will favor incumbents and those that have a lot of money to spend. And the months from January to March are the time when even seasonal residents will be in town. Even if they can't vote, they have a right to know about the candidates and the issues and to influence their friends and neighbors. Even if overall turnout is greater in November, many voters will never make it to the end of a long and complicated ballot to vote in a city election, so participation may not be higher. And then I said this change will happen at City Hall Wednesday, March 6th, unless you show up or email the mayor and to voice your opinion on this issue. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here this evening. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Ogul. And I have been before the council before. I sent an email to the council as well as to the Naples Daily News. I am thankful for the four city council members that responded to the email, that they actually received it and read it. I would also like to read what I wrote in the email to the city council and to the Naples Daily News. To all the city council members, we the people, does that ring a bell? I certainly hope so. We the people elected you to serve the residents of Benita Springs. We the people elected you for a four-year term, not four years and eight months. We the people should have a vote as to whether or not the mayoral and three council member election remains as it is currently or moved to November. You have not given a valid reason as to why the majority of the council wants to move the election. You said it would save money, but there is no cost. You say that it would be better, a higher voter turnout. That has not been proven to be true. You say it may generate more interest if there is a national election. Really? City elections are nonpartisan and should be separate from national issues and elections. Our concerns are local and we need to be able to participate in the election process. Moving the election to November may preclude citizens from participating in forums as well as meeting the candidates. During summer months, many of our voting residents are not here, as well as it being hurricane season. There is no urgency to change the date. Why not let we, the people, decide? And it also comes down to budgets as well. You are elected, you've got to do four budgets. Maybe fresh people would do a different budget, but I, I really urge you to leave the election the way it is. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? And I just want to, with counsel's indulgence, after members of the public have spoken, I have Mayor Kevin Ruane from Sanibel here that would like to share some thoughts, but I'm going to hold that till the end of this public comment session, Mayor Ruane, if that's okay with you, and counsel. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi Kathy, how are you?
For the record, Kathy McGrath, be very, very brief. Isn't it wonderful that we all have the right to express our opinions? And I can agree to disagree and agree with a lot of it, but I, in this case, on the elections, I side with John Paino. I think it should be done in November, not changed.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Judy Nyheart. Two weeks ago, I was here at the same podium telling the council why I feel it is wrong to move the council elections to November. My reasoning is the same. We all know that the winter population is much bigger in our small city than in the, most of the people are here from January to May. This means the personal level of meeting with the candidates who are neighbors is impossible for many voters who vote in November by absentee ballot. March elections allows us to be more personally involved with the candidates and in addition, more personally connected to our city. Putting the local election at the end of a long and detailed November ballot would cause some to miss voting for the local election at all or get the feeling that being at the end made it less important. This election date change was not presented to the voters at all for their opinions. Doing this as a council choice without going through the charter amendment process is leaving your constituents out of the process. We do not want the sad state of party politics to infect our local elections. Putting the partisan state of national elections at the same time as our city elections would tie them together and divide our city elections into the same factions that we have nationally. We need to work together at a local level and leave party politics out of it. When I was here two weeks ago, sitting in front of me were a group of students and teachers from the Discovery Day Academy. They came to understand the nature and feel the importance of the local democratic system. They were privileged to hear their neighbors come to the podium and speak from the heart about why they felt it was important to be there speaking, why it was important to make their voices heard, about why the change in the election date was important. In fact, it was mentioned that the day was a great turnout of residents and above the average. One by one, we came to speak about our reasoning to oppose the change. And in fact, on that day, only one, in the steady stream of impassioned speakers, supported the change of date. The students were there to see democracy in action. I wonder what they thought when the council ignored the majority of speakers and voted once again to move the election. That was not a good lesson for them of how representative government should work. So, I'm here again. Please listen to those of us who came and who here and who put you in office by voting for you. Keep the council elections in March and set a good example for those children.
Wonderful. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ann Kramer and I live in District 1. I would like to say that I agree with the speakers who read from their letters to the editors. I read those as well and I thought they were extremely well-written and really to the point. And I agree as well with Ms. Nyheart's comments. I implore this council not to move forward with this change without going to the people and asking what they want. There's a charter amendment group that's working on a number of issues for this community. And we also will have, hopefully, the next election in March, at which time you could put the question to the voters. But in the meantime, I implore you not to move forward with this. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? You can just leave that with any of the four bright faces you see right there. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. Karen Montgomery, 4101 Sawgrass Point, Pelican Landing, Benita Springs. Thank you, Ms. Amy. It's my first time speaking before you as I'm a relatively new resident. And I too concur with several of our speakers that this move to March, from March to November is incredibly bad. So, I'm going to relate a personal experience I had when I went to Fort Myers for the recount. I went thinking I was going to be there for the Senate race, but indeed, the recount that I participated in was Nikki Fried and Matt Caldwell. And I saw something that truly shocked me. Being the good dutiful voter that I am, carefully researching issues and people running for office, I was shocked at how few people vote down ticket. They voted for governor, they voted for senator. In the case that I observed and helped with the recount, they voted in the Nikki, in the Nikki Fried, Matt Caldwell race. But they didn't vote anything else. What is going to be the impact on our city government when so few people vote down ticket when you have a lengthy November election? I implore you, please keep our election in March. I want to be an active citizen and help you keep this city as wonderful as it is. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good evening, Jesse.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel, my fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon for the record. I want to also discuss election consolidation. And I want to do it from a rational, level-headed standpoint, from somebody who lost an election by 64 votes. Okay, Greg and I were separated by 30, I changed 32 minds, I'm sitting there and he's not, okay? And I'm telling you this, I have no problem with Greg having another eight months if it means us saving $60,000. That's just rational. We're looking for money here, there and everywhere. We're turning up the tree and we're shaking it. And to sit here and make the argument and shake your head and think that, hey, because it's not 20 or 2022, I don't care if it's $60,000 in 2020 or $60,000 in 2022 or $60,000 in 2024. What I care about is who's paying for it, and that's the Benita citizens. So, to me, it isn't worth getting into the political, oh, there's more Republicans or there's more Democrats. What it should come down to and what you should care about is what Tommy Doyle is going to talk to you about in a little bit. And I urge you to listen to him. It has to do with turnout. And it's not, hey, maybe that's true, maybe it's not true. The supervisor of elections will give you the numbers on special elections and on general elections here in Benita Springs, by district if you want it. You're talking a difference of 9% people, less than 10% of people voting or up to what they're predicting 80% of people voting. So, though some of you may want us to spend more money and have less people have a voice in the process, I think the majority of the people would like to have the opportunity to be involved in that process and have their voice heard. As you know, I'm the chairman of the Outreach Committee. One of our charges is to be the voice and an ear for the people to encourage participation in our election process. I'm supposed to encourage people to take a seat at the table. Now, I'm going to sit here and make the simultaneous argument that it's a better idea for us to vote in a cycle where less than 10% of the people vote? I think not. I think not. I will say, it should die tonight. If it doesn't die tonight, I will tell you this. I'm the vice chair of the Charter Review Commission and I would gladly welcome the opportunity to incorporate the necessary, necessary changes into my recommendations to the committee. But this should die tonight because more people deserve to be involved in the process and we need to be fiscally responsible. We have projects we want done. Let's do it. Let's do it. And this is a very easy way for us to transitionally do that. So, listen to Tommy Doyle. Have a great night. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, Mayor Ruane, would you come forward? I'm not sure what your timetable is exactly, but thank you for joining us. You have some information that I'm sure we'll all like to hear.
I appreciate it. Kevin Ruane for the record, Mayor Sanibel. I'm also the president-elect of Florida League of Mayors. I wanted to give an update. First, my gratitude for Benita joining five other cities to actually fight an MFL situation we have with the Water Management District. The ruling was supposed to come out January 7th. It still has been issued. But I've learned an awful lot of things through the process, where it is, where we're going with it. So, you can read into why hasn't that been issued? You know, it's an administrative process they go through. So, the judge has an opportunity to review it. There's not a timetable appropriate with it. The good news, we're going to lose that appeal. It goes back to the Water Management District for 60 days in which they can actually overturn the decision. It's certainly been opinioned that we proved the deficiencies in the case and that's certainly what the attorneys did. I also, for the record, wanted to indicate that when we initially came here, we were filing a simple appeal. Your city, my city, we go through appeals. You allow any citizen to appeal it. We go through quite additional hearings. What we were not prepared for is to literally get buried in paperwork, having 42 of us get deposed, different various people. And the bills that they ran up, unfortunately, ran to the point where it became much, much more expensive. I still believe it was worthwhile. We stood up for our citizens. We told them exactly what we wanted to do. And ironically enough, then all of a sudden, the entire Water Management Board got relieved of their duties. So, obviously, when we went there to make our pitch, obviously, the record was certainly there. Most people heard our record and certainly believed in what we had to say. But more importantly, A, my gratitude to being together as six cities and your council. Thank you for being along with that. It's important. Two, obviously, the message really resonated up to the governor because obviously, it wasn't the first time they actually did that least change as well. So, then all of a sudden, it was just, everybody had to go. And, you know, quite frankly, we were on the right side. I think we did what's right for the people. I just want to give you an update on where we were as soon as we do have a hearing. But we'll go back to the Water Management District regardless of the decision. That we did not know. And obviously, when we went into this with the Water Management District, the way they were, you know, put together since they voted against it unanimously 9-0, I had no, no thinking that if we lost the appeal, they would vote any other way. But now we have a whole different board. I know most of the members that have actually been appointed very confident regardless of the situation, but I do believe we're going to win the appeal. Just wanted to put that on the record. People have been asking me where we are in the situation. I felt compelled to tell you and I know that everybody's paid their bills, so I do appreciate it. Thank you for that. Sorry it became a more costly endeavor, but it wasn't for anything we did. We were just, the plaintiff in the situation and defendant certainly seemed to get annoyed. And all I said for the record was, if I treated everyone that came in my council on an appeal that way, I mean, where would we be? Everybody has a right, just like I heard people give their opinion, listen to their opinion, do what you're supposed to do. But, you know, to get inundated with paperwork, to get inundated with the types of interrogatories. Mine came with a 60-page attachment. I was called the ringleader of this situation. I got you all to come along for it. I had no science. It was politically motivated. We answered a rebuttal and the judge found in our favor. So, again, it was a very long process, but I thank you and that's really the purpose for me to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate that, Kevin. I just want to say, working side by side with you, obviously, I came to the council here with a recommendation to get involved with all the other jurisdictions and mayors in Lee County. And as you know, we approved that, which made it unanimous for Lee County. But I want to thank you for your years of hard work on this issue and so many others. And I know you have the ear of the governor. I know you have the ear of the South Florida Water Management District. I know you have the ear of so many others. I want to compliment and commend and congratulate one of your fellow members of your Sanibel City Council, Chauncey Goss, who was the first appointed official under Governor DeSantis to join the South Florida Water Management District. And we know where Chauncey is on these issues. We know of his competency on these issues, working side by side with you and so many others. And just a question for you. Less than 48 hours after Governor DeSantis was sworn in, where, where was he in Lee County talking about his bold environmental initiatives?
He was here.
He was at, he was in Benita Springs. And that's because of you and so many others, but...
No, honestly, I give Jason Mon honestly, he was on the bandwagon a lot earlier than I was and I give him all the credit in the world. I just had the fortune of going through the state. There's now 212 mayors behind us on this issue. But I came across a congressman by the name of Brian Mass. And Brian ended up heading up his environmental team. We've become really good friends. We're talking two and three times a week on what positions were open, what recommendations there were. Chauncey certainly was the recommendation we made. But even on every other seat, I had the opportunity. I've gotten to know him really, really well. Along those lines, we're certainly trying to accelerate the laws process. So, we were up in DC before you were, Peter. But we went up there, saw the entire delegation, both Congressman Rooney and Congressman Mass are going to write a letter supporting the acceleration of laws. Laws is actually going to be rewritten for 45 months. It's going to take the process. We've actually asked it to take 18 months. We gave them a schedule backed by science on how you can do this and expedite it. Laws is a policy change that we obviously can have really implemented very quickly and it has no cost to the taxpayer. And yet, that has an opportunity. It really comes down to management lake, which was really the cornerstone of why we did what we did. So, for nothing else, I can assure your citizens and your council, the money was well-spent. It got the year of the governor. The Water Management Board is gone. And now we're going through a different Army Corps of Engineers as we're going through releases and just the whole process. So, I do believe it was really worthwhile, even though I had no idea when I came here, this council, it was going to be that expensive of an endeavor. But your own council could tell you, we didn't run the bill up, they did. All we did was defend ourselves. But thank you for your time and I thank you for your cooperation and more importantly, the fellowship, the camaraderie and everybody together. But I can assure you, there's 212 mayors now together on water quality. It's our number one initiative with the Florida League of Cities.
Great. No, thank you, Mayor Ruane. Counsel, do you have questions or comments for Mayor Ruane?
Just to say, just to say, Kevin, thanks so much for all your hard work, really over the years on this. So, thank you.
Listen, it's, it's about the economy and that's really what it is. Without it, I mean, we're just not in where we need to be. And, you know, the league was really good with the studies, but it's been an honor to do so. And quite frankly, our council is laser-focused. We all have responsibilities. I've just been in office a lot longer than most, so I've been at this a while. But thank you. I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
Thank you.
Mayor Ruane, thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
All righty. Thank you for that update. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
To move...
Okay, there's been a motion to accept and a second?
Second.
Further comments or conversation?
That is including the addendum as well?
Yes.
The motion.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you, Derek. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, great. We're going to move on now to proclamations and presentations. Yes?
I'd just like to make a comment on...
Oh, sure.
On C.
Councilwoman Karumba.
I'm sorry. I should have told you that ahead of time. But I'm very pleased, I want to point out Jackie Hausmann, who is, sits on the Art and Public Policy Committee with other members too, but she is an alumni of Montevallo. And it's through her auspices that we were able to get this. And I think the whole committee got behind it so that this is going to be, I think, really quite a boon to our community. And hopefully, once it's in place, we could have some kind of a special festival and to have a sculpture garden down at River Park kind of as a test case because I think that's really the direction that we're going with our, the ones that we've purchased already. So, I just want to thank her so much for taking the initiative and having this be a possibility. So, they're going to be in place for a year. And that was my point.
No, I appreciate that and I, I know Jackie. I don't know her at, I guess, maybe this level. I know her in a different, other capacity. Wonderful, wonderful woman. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
But she was the initiator here.
Great, great. Counsel, any other comments?
Just to add on to, and Amy, maybe you have this, but Jackie called me and she said there's a reception on, to make sure all of counsel's invited on the 27th at 4:00 PM. Oh, sorry.
March 27th, Peter, at 4:00 PM?
At Viat Bentley Village. It's a reception for the students from the college.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be here, so that's probably...
Oh, all right.
But anyway, that's great.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Okay.
One other quick thing.
Sure.
And we talked about this before, but I just want to mention it again because of the work they did. So, thanks to the people in Benita Bay, the Minnesota Club who reached out to the twins. So, let's hope we get that matching grant.
Wonderful. Great work. Okay, we're now going to move on to proclamations and presentations. Then I'm going to ask Mayor, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn to assist me here. This is a proclamation recognizing the literary, literacy, literacy council, excuse me. That's not, that's not, that's not a tongue twister for whatever reason. Literacy council? Can I, can say that three times fast? Please come forward, but here you are, so thank you. Peter, do you want to make some introductions here?
Yes, sure.
So, I asked Peter if I could join him because of the fact that Kathy was taking the pictures and I, along with a whole bunch of people in Benita Bay and throughout the community, have been involved for more than 10, 15 years with the literacy council. So, Sue Holman, who is a chief of staff, director, executive director. And also with us is Gladys, who is at St. John Newman. And Alex, who has a catering business. So, perhaps, Peter, you want to read the proclamation?
Wonderful. Yes, thank you so much for being here. I'd like to read this, then we'd love to hear from each of you. Okay. Thank you. On behalf of the city of Benita Springs, this is a proclamation recognizing the Literacy Council Gulf Coast for 30 years of service to the community. Whereas, Literacy Council of Gulf Coast Incorporated is a nonprofit agency which has served Southwest Florida for 30 years in assisting children and adults in acquiring the English literacy skills necessary to improve their quality of life. And whereas, the council is the second-largest non-governmental, nonprofit literacy organization in the United States according to Pro-Literacy servicing, excuse me, serving students and families in Lee, Hendry and Collier Counties. And whereas, nearly 500 volunteers from Benita Springs and Southwest Florida served more than 3,200 children, mothers and families during the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. And whereas, 98% of adult students surveyed have indicated that they have reached their individual literacy goals through the work of the council. And whereas, 100% of children who have graduated from the Carol DeJoy Moms and Tots Family Literacy Council Program have started school at or above school-grade level. And whereas, the council has offered these services without receiving any federal, state or local government subsidy, now therefore, I, Mayor Peter Simmons, the city of Benita Springs, do hereby commend Literacy Council Gulf Coast for its 30 years of service... literacy council Gulf Coast for its 30 years of service to our community and encourage the advancement of literacy in our region. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, March 6th, 2019. Congratulations, and thank you for your amazing work. Picture now? Would you like to say a few words? It sounds like the battery's dead, but it actually takes pictures. Wait till you hear it. Dust it off, though. Thank you. Believe it or not, it takes pictures.
Thank you so much, sir, thank you, members of the council. We're very pleased to be here this evening. The literacy council started 30 years ago with a handful of students and a couple of individual tutors, and they taught one-on-one, and it's grown to be over 3,200 students in those 30 years in three counties, not just down the street, up the street. But our main office is here in Benita, it's our home, it's on Old 41. We encourage you to come and join us, come visit us, volunteer with us, see what we do. And we serve mothers, children, individual adults, and we do everything we can to help people to become better citizens in this community, so that they can understand, read, and write English, and be successful, and start their own businesses, or get better jobs as a result of their language improvement. And we thank you for your support for these 30 years. I'd like to introduce very quickly two students that I brought with us today, who are success stories, and they're going to tell you right now what they do as a result of learning English at the literacy council.
Hello, good evening, my name is Alex Hernandez. I've been going to literacy council for five years. I also have been working on my GED, I passed math already, I've just been working on my, on language arts. I'll be soon, I'll be done with everything, and after that, I would like to go to college. I also own a fusion food catering company, and my dream is to become entrepreneur. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gladys Kraus. Well, my story is a little longer, but I'm just, because I started going to the literacy council. So, right now, this is my sixth year as a teacher of Spanish, and my third year as the Spanish Department Chair, that has allowed me also to be invited, like for the third time, to Ohio, Cincinnati, to participate in a big event, in an annual event, with teachers from every part of the United States, and also out of the country. And all this because of my skills in the language, in this English language that I got from the literacy council, and I'm very thankful for all that support that I received through the years. Thank you. I work at St. John Newman Catholic High School in Naples.
I was just gonna say, and we look forward to our children go to Bishop Vareau, and I see they've been added on the football schedule, so looking forward to the St. John Newman-Bishop-Vareau rivalry, that'll be nice. And thank you, and we're adding Bishop Vareau, and Benita Springs is coming on to the regular schedule, so this is gonna be a lot of fun and a lot of camaraderie. But thank you, thank you, thank you, Sue, for the amazing work that you do, and best of luck with you, and please, please keep us updated for all the great work that you're doing, okay? Wonderful. Thank you so much, and God bless, thank you. Okay, great, great work, Peter, and great work, everybody out there. If we could give them a round of applause, please. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we're now gonna move on to mayor and council member items. Item A is city council meeting, Roberts Rules of Order clarified, Councilman Fred Forbes, and this is green sheet 1903061. Fred?
Actually, when I wrote this, I wanted to get Derek to weigh in, and he did. He edited and revised anything to make sure it complied with Roberts' rules. And I did this because I've seen instances where we didn't understand how some of these procedures work, and the, and in fact, on that point of order, if the mayor was doing something we thought was not kosher, we can call a point of order on you. The only interesting thing is, the mayor, without further discussion, makes the final decision without any rebuttal.
I make the final decision whether I'm out of order or I'm not?
Whether it was okay or not.
Alright, well.
And I think.
I'll work with your team, I promise.
And I would hope that some of this has helped those that were not aware of some of these things, because some of them have not been exactly correctly used in the past. And then, the thing about closing, calling for the question, does take a two-thirds majority, but that is available if we want to do it.
Okay. Counsel?
Question on that, I guess to Derek. On the question of calling the question, doesn't, isn't it also, you have to have like three up and three down, you gotta have both sides represented? You just can't have one side then call the question, and have the two-thirds vote, if the other parties didn't get a chance to weigh in against the motion? You understand what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. The, the general rule with calling the question, or technically it's called calling the prior question, is that once everyone has had their opportunity to speak on an item, that sort of going round robin opportunity is called for to end the debate. It requires a two-thirds vote to end the debate. If it does not, then the debate continues until such time as a vote comes. But I wasn't, even I didn't realize the two-thirds rule was in place.
And two-thirds would be five of the seven? Or two-thirds of the members.
At conferences and stuff like that, in order to call the question, you have to have so many for, so many against, which may be the two-thirds.
This, this, you know, this is going after a book that was written in the 1860s.
Right.
You know, so it's a little Byzantine, but the appropriate rule is two-thirds of the body for small deliberative bodies like this, that may be different in different parliamentary procedures. We have our own rules that modify Roberts' rules through resolutions of the council. None of those things were affected. I treated this basically as a refresher for everyone, and you'll notice the last paragraph in the green sheet does, you know, in these informal items we do, the friendly amendments, things like that, that is appropriate where it's seeking to clarify the issue. So, you know, to the greatest degree possible, we want to keep it moving along quickly, and I think that's what Councilman Forbes was asking me to look at, is how to clarify these rules, so that we are actually using them properly to get us through the items and keep the meeting moving forward.
Okay.
I just have, sorry?
I was just gonna go and comment, because I rely on you on guiding us to how we run these procedures appropriately, and when we have a question, I would hope that you would chime in and say, "I think I know where you're trying to go, let me help you," even if we're not really up on it, because we don't go to attend meetings that frequently, whereas you are responsible for doing this kind of thing. So, is that wrong?
No, and under, under your rules, I am technically your parliamentarian.
Right.
I think it's important to realize.
Thank goodness.
I think it's important to realize that the motion process is not intended to be the final form. You are making motions to direct other people, whether it's yourselves or staff, to do something. And so, you know, it's a very fluid item. It's not intended that, the way you write a motion, it's supposed commas here and the periods there, unless you're actually talking about amending something that's written down. For the most part, clarification is encouraged. And if I don't understand it, and I can't put it into an ordinance, I'm gonna raise it.
If you don't understand it, how do you expect me to understand it, Derek, right? Now, fair enough. Counsel, or Peter?
No, I just had a comment, which I think these are helpful, and in fact, you know, the motion to amend, I'm probably gonna use that tonight, that's fine. But just an overview, which is, we are a collegial body, and I thank Peter for running these meetings as a collegial body. Frankly, there's plenty that he does and we do that is not in conformance with Roberts' Rules of Order. This happens to be three, we're just picking out of a book that, well, you got the book, which is about 1,000 pages long. But I don't have an issue with that, because, you know, it's run, so I'll give you one example, under Roberts' rules, like you often say, Pete, "Let's start here with Amy and go down," that actually is not appropriate under Roberts' rules. You're supposed to be, recognize the person who puts their hand up, but my view is big deal.
Right.
In other words, the meeting flows, once in a while you do it, it's not the end of the world, and I think that informality and collegiality is really what is the most important thing up in this, on this body.
Great, and I appreciate that, Peter. Counsel, other questions or comments, or Fred, any closing thoughts?
No, I agree, and I, I think that it is important, though, for us to know on this point of order how it works, and do it that way, and if somebody calls a point of order and then interrupts another councilman and takes over the dialogue, that's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be, you call a point of order, the mayor says, "What's your point of order?" And then he rules on it, good, bad, or indifferent, and if you rule against it, it's no more discussion, and all that, but that, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Fair enough, and you know, we, we have a good ebb and a flow up here, and I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to, but Derek, what is the rule, I guess, on an interruption? I'm not trying to wordsmith here, but what is the rule on interruption?
Well, your interruptions are actually governed by your, your city procedural rules.
Right.
And a member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to call him to order or, and here and otherwise provided, it's basically a point of order. Now, technically, the point of order rules are, you're not supposed to use that as a means of recogni, you have to get recognition from the chair or speak in turn. I think the point that Councilman Forbes is making is, points of order should not be used to interrupt, and that, that is the intent of both Roberts' rules and your own adopted rules of procedure.
Okay, that's great.
I'd like to call a question.
Yeah. And I'd like to rule that I'm not being irrational or interrupting, how's that? On myself. No, no, but Fred, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, I mean, honestly. Yeah, and Derek, I don't know, you know? Everybody, we, we, don't be afraid to refresh me, for one, okay? And Greg, did you have something else?
Well, I just had to make a, I just wanted to make a quick comment, if you're finished, I mean.
Yes.
You can rebut my rebuttal.
Go ahead and interrupt.
I guess my question is.
Then I'll rule on it.
From what you said prior to that, I mean, I think this body is, like you said, a collegial body, and I think for the most part, we get along, and I know at one point, six months ago, eight months ago, you even made, not a rule, but kind of said, "Hey, we're gonna hear it one time, and that's it, and we'll go around the horn, and that's it." We stopped doing that. We really don't want to, in my opinion, you know, not the rules are made to be broken, but, you know, if you followed everything in that book, it would be so dull, and everybody out here would be asleep, because it would be so, "Point of order, can I be recognized?" Or chair recognizes, Councilman DeWitt from District 2, it would just be so.
Which include the neighborhoods of.
Exactly. So, I mean, I, I think if we get out of hand, I think that's your job, as the mayor, to keep us in line and working the right way, and it's Derek's job as a parliamentarian to, "Hey, alright, timeout, you've done a second, you've done amendment to the amendment to the amendment, let's take a timeout and redo the whole thing."
Only two amendments.
So.
So, I appreciate that. Counsel, anything else on this? Alright, Councilman Forbes, thanks for bringing this up. We're gonna move on to item, item B, discussion of the I-75 Purple Heart Highway Designation Efforts Program and Direction to Staff, and this is Councilman Fred Forbes, green sheet 1903062. Fred?
Yeah, basically, at the MPO meeting that was held a few weeks ago, was a joint meeting with Charlotte County and Lee, and they presented something to MPO asking for help, which led to this, but what they, what Charlotte and Sarasota County are doing, they're cooperating and working towards making I-75 from the north end of Sarasota County all the way down to the south end of Charlotte Harbor. And then they said, "We would like to get Lee County MPO to consider doing the same thing in Lee County," and then they pointed out something, which I think was a surprise to many of us, that instead of getting FDOT approval or DOT approval, the people that have to do this as a legislative body has to make a law, a local law, that applies to these three counties and say it'll be a Purple Heart Highway. And then they also come up with a modest amount of money, I mean, it's almost not worth talking about, to have plaques at the, as you enter each county and leave each county, going into the next one, saying, "This is a Purple Heart Highway." So, I said, "Well, if you want to make it a legislative thing, we gotta get on our horse if you want to do it this year." Legislative things can be done quickly within the session at any time, and so we agreed that the MPO would make a motion to support this, which they're doing, and I piggybacked on the idea, and I said, "I think you ought to also consider contacting, each, each county would contact their American Legion and VFW posts within the county, and then in any of the rest stops or some suitable place, there'd be a plaque that could be added to every, every time that somebody new in that county gets a Purple Heart," so you could have a list of the people that have gotten a Purple Heart. And then I said, "Wouldn't it be helpful if all the city councils passed a motion to support this move to make I-75 in Lee County, hoping to butt, butt up to Charlotte and Sarasota a Purple Heart Highway?" And they all said, "Yes, more is better." And then my, what I would like to do is make a motion that we get staff to prepare a letter, and they can consult with Don Scott on the wording and all that, to what'd be the most suitable, and we go on record and vote that we would support that for the mayor's signature. So, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second? Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you, Fred. We're now gonna move on to item nine, which is a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinances, and public comment is allowed. Derek?
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida relating to elections to provide for general elections of municipal officers to be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of even numbered years beginning in November 2020 for districts 2, 4, 6, and the mayoral seat, and November 2022 for districts 1, 3, and 5, to coincide with state and federal elections, providing for conflicts of law, severability, Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I shall move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Is there further discussion?
A motion to amend.
Derek? Yeah, we'll do public comment now. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time, and I know Supervisor Doyle is here, I'd like to recognize him to speak as well, but members of the public, please, at this time. Thank you.
I would love to hear Mr. Doyle speak before I do.
Okay, that's fine. He is obviously a member of the public. Yes, Greg?
That's the, I guess, the parliamentarian rule. Do we have discussion with us before we have public comment, or does it matter, or can we have?
Public comment should occur before a vote.
Before a vote, but what about our discussion?
What about our discussion?
You can have, there's no, your rules procedure don't address that. You can have discussion on the motion?
Greg, would you wanna offer a comment?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry we're doing this.
No, no, no.
I thought a motion to amend supersedes the primary motion if it's seconded and needed debated, but I mean, I, this is like, you know.
It supersedes all supplemental motions, so.
Including the primary for discussion.
Yeah. The, so then the, in the order is, there's a, would you like to?
No, 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 it's okay.
You only made the motion, you didn't actually indicate what the amendment is.
Well, let, let it go, let's have Tommy speak.
Okay. Supervisor Doyle, would you like to speak at this time, and thank you for being here?
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
I brought this, has nothing to do with your, maybe you might get a, might be able to use that someday.
Okay.
A book with all your representatives, congressmen's addresses, emails, and.
Wonderful, thank you.
It's a good book to have for references. So, last time I was here, I talked about how the city could save money and increase voter turnout. So, I think, once you get this list, I want to just drop down to the highlighted area where it says Benita Springs turnout during a PPP with the mayor on the race and a ballot compared to the general election. I went back and pulled some numbers, just specific to Benita precincts. So, in March of 2004, and I just used numbers, so you had 49. So in March of 2004, and I just used numbers, so you had forty nine, four thousand nine hundred and forty-nine Bonita residents show up to vote at the PPP. In the general, you had eight thousand six hundred and fifty-one, which is 1.7 times more voters, and there was not even a mayor or a councilman from the City of Bonita on that race. And if you go down, you'll see the same thing. And out to the side, it shows that the, on the PPP, that it was a Democratic ballot or a Republican ballot that was on the primary, or there was Republicans and Dems. You'll see in January of 2008, that was Republican ballot only, because that's the, anyway, you see a big turnout for the City of Bonita, because it's a Republican, it was a Republican situation. But every, on the outside, you see 1.61 times more people voted in Bonita than they did in the PPP in January 2012, there was 2.11 times more people voted in the general election in March, and it just continues that way. And I, you know, basically, I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I'm not trying, I don't, you know, it's, it's about turnout and saving money for the City of Bonita.
So, Tom, just to clarify, I clarify, you repeat two things. We do not pay for the upcoming March election.
I know that.
No, no, with.
No, that, but still, you pay for the election that comes in March of 2022, yes.
Right, no, I'm not, I just, I just put that out there.
Yeah, so you clarified it.
Clarify, you know, some people have been saying that it's, "Cost us $100,000, that's around town," other people have said it's gonna cost us $60,000, but I know when you were here last time, it cost us nothing, the March 2020 election.
Yes, it will cost you nothing to be on the March 2020 election.
Right.
That, you have paid up to sixty-some thousand dollars for a off-year election.
Off-year election.
Yeah.
So, March 2020, once again, for people, because I know it's spreading around town, it's zero, and '22, just like '18, we're not piggybacking, those are the other three district seats, and those, we would pay for that.
Correct.
If we had it in March.
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing is, we talked about this last time, I understand the point you're making here, the information, the turnout for Bonita Springs in the March 2016 mayoral race was over 50%, and in certain precincts in Bonita Springs, it was over 60%.
In the PPP?
And, in the.
And I'm not denying that, I'm just saying that, I would, I look back at, there were some precincts in Bonita in the PPP that 90%, not in the PPP, but in the general, that 90% of the voters voted.
Right, including where I live. I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, because there's a lot of facts being thrown around here, not by you, but by others.
Right.
So, the turnout we had for the 2016 mayoral election, which was the date of the PPP, was citywide over 50, and in certain precincts, it was over 60. I'm not talking about these numbers, I hear these numbers.
Right.
It's the, once again, it's the 2022 election that has, or the 2018 election in District Three that had the low turnout, the number of 8% that's being thrown out.
Right, it was, it was, it was close to 10.
It was close to 10.
Yes.
That is the off-year election.
Correct.
2018 or 2022, that's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Peter. Fred?
Well, we're, we're talking numbers, and if I read this correctly, as a minimum, the lowest we would have, by these numbers, we would have 61% more people vote in the mayoral election year if we go in November. Now, we have what's called an undervote, Greg knows what that is, and that's where, if in the presidential primary, or even ours, if they're not sure about what they wanna do in the race, they don't vote on that, you never have much more than 20% of that or 30%, and that's for some real weird thing, a mosquito board or something nobody knows about. But even if that was true, we would still have over 30% more people voting for the mayor. And there's only two people on this die has ever, ever ran a citywide race, the mayor and I, I did it in a fire district, but it, it's a much different thing in a district.
Yeah, no, and I, I think, thank, thank you for that point, and I guess, just for folks that don't have the benefit of looking, does, does everybody have this in front of them, or just?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine, but just for the benefit of folks that aren't looking at this, I will go through some numbers here, as people say, "We're here to discuss numbers." The 2016 March election, for the PPP, the presidential primary, in March of 2016, a total of 15,700.
Now, you're, you're, this is, this, the top numbers are, doesn't take in consideration of the City of Bonita, it's countywide, it's countywide.
My mistake, I'm looking at the wrong set of numbers, folks.
It's 157,000.
Right, 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 my mistake, looking at the wrong set of numbers. 2016, in March of 2016, 17,653 people showed up to vote. In November of 16, 29,685 people showed up to vote. So while that's not double, that is an additional roughly 12, 12,500 people showed up in November.
Another 68%.
Or 68% increase.
Yes.
Over the March numbers. So you're telling me, Tommy, in these numbers, if folks who claim to be snowbirds, they still figure out a way to vote, they send, what are the difference in mail-in ballots? Do you have a breakdown there?
50% of our voters vote by mail.
Okay, and it doesn't obviously matter whether they're in town or out of town.
In 2018, it was 51%.
Right.
Yeah, with our, with the way that we do mail, we pay the posties back, it's, it's increased quite a bit. And November election, I'm not, I, I can't argue the point too much, because I don't know the fa, the stats on snowbirds, but they're heading back.
No, I, my only point is, we hear that folks are here in March, not in November, but I guess the numbers would dictate otherwise, whether they're here or whether they're up north, in March, you have 17,000 some odd people vote.
Yep.
And in November, you have 29,000 some odd people vote.
Correct.
So I just wanted to mention that, because we've heard that argument quite a few times.
Yes.
Let me ask you this, in two, and I know you weren't the supervisor, in fact, you were elected in 2016, when you go back to.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Are we interrupting?
No, I'm asking you a question, which is, how are we doing this?
I'm, I'm making comments right now, you made yours, Fred made his, I'm making mine.
At length?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Well, under Robert's rules, there's a point about that, which is, if you're an advocate, and you're gonna spend a lot of time advocating and kind of monopolizing it, you ought to hand the gavel over to someone else, so that there'll be a fair representation.
Okay, I'll, I'll close. The bottom line, in March of 2016, 17,653 people voted. In November of 2016, 29,685 people voted, for an increase of 65%. Other members of counsel?
May I be recognized?
Greg?
Uh, yeah, I just.
You've spoken once, wait your turn, please.
I guess my comment is, is I, I don't have a true problem with moving, I just think that it should be the members of the public to make that, make that determination. I know that the, the ca, not the council, but the Charter Review Committee is out there, they're taking up certain things that are already on, in the charter, that's what their job is. So let's really put it out there on the, in the 2020 election, during the height of it in November, and let the people make that decision. 29,000 people will make that decision.
Well, your charter amendments would go in March.
Okay, well, March, can we put it in November?
Hmm, we'd have to think about that one.
Okay, then, can we think about this one, then? Can we put it in, in the 2020, in November, when the most voters here?
Probably on the primary, but that, I'd have to collaborate with some of my department heads on the, how many charter amendments you're gonna have.
Okay, all right, but if the Charter Review Committee can look at it and say, "All right, we've got five, we'll knock one of the lower, lower hanging fruit off there, we'll save that one for next year," or whatever, because the way it sounds, if we can change the charter at any time, we'll bring it up for a vote next year.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't need, if, if the, if we can go against what a majority of the emails that we have gotten that say, "Don't do it."
Right.
And I won't take one more comment, is this a one-time deal?
Greg, take your time, I'm in charge of this meeting.
Okay, is this a one-time deal?
No.
So if we don't do it now, we can come back to you in 2020 and say, "Hey, can we get on to 2022 and, and not pay for it, and we'll move our date?"
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Other members of counsel that haven't spoken, Amy? Derek, please.
What I just pointed, we're in the public hearing portion of this, so it's appropriate for questions and, between Mr. Doyle and the council, but at that point, let the other public members speak, and then deliberate the actual motion that's pending amongst yourselves. So it seems like we're crossing lines on that, and as your parliamentarian, that would be my advice.
Thank you, Derek.
We should wind down our questions with Mr. Doyle, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, you should, you should limit yourself to questions of Mr. Doyle, and allow the rest of the public to participate before taking action on the.
Well, the only comment I'm gonna make is, is just that we did have some people that indicated some concern about, even if the numbers are different, how effective the vote would be because of both the down ballot issue, which is not reflected here at all, and also the fact that the, that the issues themselves don't get a full hearing in a larger election, which is, these numbers don't reflect that at all. And I know that in my other life, in both Connecticut and New York, we have municipal elections at a different time than in November, for the reasons that were brought up numerous times by the many dozens of emails that we got, and from the people speaking here. So this, I don't think the decision comes down to numbers, personally, and I agree with Greg, that this should be decided for, by the people, so they could weigh all these things, and, and they could tell us how to go forward with this, because I think there are some problems that are not reflected in the numbers if we move to the November elections. It's not just a, a, a numbers issue here.
Can I be clear, that I'm not, I, I'm for this, but I'm not advocating and lobbying for it, it's, it's the opportunity that I'm giving the council and the City of Bonita Springs. I think it's an opportunity, but I'm not, you know, it's not like that, it's not a selling point, I'm just giving you the numbers so you guys can make the decision.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, Amy. Other members of counsel? Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Pete, why don't we have public comment, and then we can discuss.
Okay, great. Fred, did you have something, I'm sorry?
No, let's do the public comment.
Supervisor Doyle, any further thoughts or comments?
No, I just appreciate you letting me come talk to you, I think it's a good opportunity for the city and the other municipalities in the county to get on board, I'll just try, hoping to save some money for the city, and whatever you guys decide, we'll do, we'll do it.
Great, no, I appreciate that. Greg?
I, I do have one question, and just a follow-up question for you, Supervisor of election, we, I kinda mentioned it before, what is your opinion, I know in the last couple of legislative, they've had the voter bill of rights about these being too long, and that has been a concern of some of the.
With the lengthy ballot, you're talking about, yeah.
The lengthy ballot.
It is a concern, but I think with the way our vote by mail is increasing, it's a less concern, and I, I think back in 2015, I addressed that during my campaign, that with the way that they've changed the rules with vote by mail, it's no excuse vote by mail, so it just keeps increasing and increasing, we're going from, you know, 45% in the last election before 2018, up to 51%. It's just, it's people's choice to vote by mail, and it's not like they're gonna have to sit in line and wait for the tabulator at the polls.
Follow-up, sir, if you don't mind?
Yes, no?
Just one follow-up que, I guess, one follow-up comment or question. With these numbers that you've provided, what is, with the mail-by ballot and the absentee ballots and all that, why such the low turnout during the presidential primaries? Any, any opinion?
Well, well, I don't really know, people's lack, you know, why is it they're, they vote in the August primary, because, you know, you haven't, you have 20%, 27% turnout, and then it's all about what's on the race that drives people, just as like, like this last election that we had, it was what was on the race, who was on the race really drove, drove people to vote.
All right, thank you.
Yep, no, absolutely, okay.
You finished with me?
Supervisor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for taking your time.
Other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue, please come forward.
Dwight Essman, again.
Good evening.
And if I knew how much fun this was gonna be, I would've started showing up much earlier to these meetings, this is, this is good, and Mr. Doyle, you kinda took away my first part of the thing, because I didn't know how much research you guys had done on this, you've obviously done a little, but I believe he was talking about total turnout, not votes in the city council elections, am I correct?
No, you're wrong.
Okay, you were talking about the turnout.
This is, this is Bonita precinct, precincts only, turnout for Bonita precincts only during the PPP, during the general.
Okay.
That's precinct in Bonita only.
Okay.
Yeah.
I took a look at 2000, and in the Fort Myers City Council, with the help of, I think, Vicki in your office.
Yeah, could I, could I comment on that?
Yeah.
Year 2000 was the first election that the City of Bonita had, and that you were, it was a, I think you were in the first primary, was August, and there was a second primary, you, you guys had a runoff in the second primary, so it's, it's a whole, it was a whole nother animal.
Okay. All right.
That's when the 50% plus one was in effect.
In fact, yes.
Right, correct.
Okay, it did just show, it was close, but I'll take, take this. Regardless of whether the turnout is greater or not, this is gonna set a precedent. What keeps the next council from saying, "Let's just move it back to March, because it's more convenient," or something. I don't really think you wanna do this without it going to your Charter Review Committee, and then let them decide, and then put it to a vote. I mentioned ethics. When I wrote the letter, I hadn't done any research, I just felt like it was unethical. But Part III of the Code of Ethics for Public Officers and Employees, which is 112.3143, Voting Conflicts, "No county, municipal, or other local public officer shall vote in an official capacity upon any measure which would injure to his or her special private gain or loss." I can read you the paragraph about special private gain or loss, but basically says, "Unless the measure involves a large class of people, you can't vote on it." You can vote on rezoning a golf course, because lots of people live on a golf course, but if you vote on this measure by extending your term of office and the amount of money you're paid, I think that is a special private gain. I urge you to decide not to change it, to go back to your committee, and then let the committee make a recommendation, and if so, it can go on the ballot, and it can be changed for maybe 2022, but maybe for 2024. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Hello again, everyone, for the record, John Pano, Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance and CGT Kayaks. I would like a little clarification, if I could get it, it was stated that the 2020 election is already paid for, it doesn't cost anything? Well, it costs $60,000, from what I just understand, and if we don't spend it on the special election, where does that money go? Does that go back into our coffers?
I apologize, we know this isn't the format to answer questions, if you would like to speak, Derek.
No, I don't know.
Nobody from the council, please speak.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, I think the, I don't think it's been prepaid, I think it's because it would coincide with another election.
Yeah, it's because it's right along with the presidential primary, which is the countywide election, and when you're placed on that, the city doesn't have to pay anything or bear very little, maybe.
Hey, I'm just wondering where that money, if that money just goes back into the budget?
That money doesn't.
Well, like, the county budget?
It was, it was never budgeted at the beginning.
It's part of the county budget.
It's part of the county budget.
Right.
So it would go back into the county budget?
Yeah, it's part of the budget for the supervisor elections for the PPP, and the And the city of, the grid is right along on that, on that PPP.
Okay, so Lee County residents then would see that money go back into the budget, into their county budget?
There's no money to go back.
There's no money, thank you.
It says that the, that the city will not be billed for the, for the election. Normally on a off-year, we bill the city for conducting their election.
But you said for 2020, you.
There's no bill because there's, because it's countywide, and that includes the city of Bonita, Lee County.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I went over most of my major points earlier, so I'll just keep this short and sweet and say that Lee County has their checkbook out. We need to seize that opportunity. Doesn't come around very often. It's the fiscally responsible thing to do. And furthermore, we're going to incentivize more people to actually be involved in the process. Look, maybe it's the national side that drags them in, but maybe that's what starts to get them actually interested in state and local politics. That's what brings people to the table. That's what we're trying to do here. This consolidation makes sense for the taxpayers of Bonita, and it makes sense from the standpoint that we want to include more people at the table in the city of Bonita Springs. So I'd urge you to vote for consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Discuss.
Are we going to have an amendment?
Well, I have an amendment, if it's the right Pete.
Yes, please.
And let me start by saying I think I got carried away with Robert's rules because they got introduced earlier.
Sure. Fair enough.
So my amendment is that the ordinance should only be effective, let me back up a second. The concept is to do this like we did the term limits. Council approved the term limits, then it went to a vote in a referendum. So my suggestion is to do it the same way here. The ordinance shall only become effective upon approval of a referendum question by the electors of the city of Bonita Springs to occur at the time of the upcoming referendum by the Charter Review Committee. And then the notion is we would send this to the Charter Review Committee for their review and recommendation. That's the motion.
Okay, and Greg, you seconded that?
I seconded, yes.
Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Fred?
Well, can I speak to it?
Sure.
No, go ahead, Fred. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm in charge, Peter? It's your amendment, so please. You know, but it's your amendment, so please, yeah.
That's actually correct, yeah. So I also want to thank Tommy Doyle and his wife for coming again to Bonita Springs. It seems like we're in reruns on this thing, I'm sure to him. And I have no quibble with these numbers. I, I don't think anyone has said, it's obvious, there's more people voting in a, in a general election for president than any election in America. That's, that's not what we've been discussing the last few weeks. And I really going to make this short because it is in reruns and we've had this conversation at two separate meetings. But there are a lot of benefits to March versus November. They relate to what a lot of the public speakers talked about today, which is the ability to have real one-on-one public participation in a more complete fashion in Bonita Springs. It's the debates, it's the coffee clashes, it's all one-on-ones. When you do it in hurricane season, when an awful lot of people are up north, yes, they will vote by mail and ballot, but they're not here to participate in that kind of quintessential local election concept. And there are plenty of other points too, but I don't want to bore the council with it, we've been through it before. Essentially, my point on the amendment is simple. There are points that are made all over on all sides. You've made some, Pete, and I've made some, various people have. The notion is, on something this important, when we are extending our terms for eight months, that's my big issue with this, that we're sitting here, this council, and deciding on our own to extend our term for eight months. I know the law of Florida now allows it. I doubt the Constitution of the United States allows it, but leaving that aside, all right? Leaving that aside, and I wouldn't go so far as to say it ethics here. The basic point is, when we're doing something like that, that affects our ability to serve and extends it for eight months, to me, just like we did on the term limits, that really is something for the people of Bonita Springs to decide. So that's my, that's my, my view on it.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Fred?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions for Derek. Number one, the thing about us being not able to vote on this ethically and we'd be in violation and all that, is that, that really isn't a problem, is it?
Uh, no, there's a Commission on Ethics opinion indicating there's a separate provision within the Code of Ethics in the, in the same section that was cited, that says that nothing shall prohibit city council from voting on items which would address their salary or benefits or travel packages. Those are, those are things that come up part of the budget process, and I just reread the statute and I think it would cover this particular issue from an ethics point of view.
Now, a second question is hypothetically, if the state law that gives us permission to do that, incidentally, I believe that state law allows you for things like this to extend a term, but you can't cut terms short, I believe, by that. At least that was said at one of the earlier meetings by somebody, I don't know what was said by Tommy Doyle or you, but assuming it wasn't, that that law didn't exist, did not the charter amendment of 2010 give the council the legal authority to change the date of the election anyway?
Uh, yes, it did. What, um, there are two laws in, state laws that affect this. One is in the Elections Code and one is in the Municipal Home Powers Act. They work in concert to allow the, the 2010 referendum which changed the charter. This is not, this is not a legal issue, this, whether to move the date. Far in my research, this is not a legal issue, this is a policy issue.
Right. I just wanted, because that's been alluded to and talked about, I just wanted to get that out on the table.
Other members of the council? Greg and then Peter?
Well, two things. I guess, I got a question. You said the 2010 referendum. So in 2010, it went to the vote of the people to change it, to give us that latitude to move it a little bit. So the intent wasn't to move it eight months. The intent in 2010 was to move it whatever the PPP is, the presidential primary election.
If, if the PPP had been referenced, then I would say that there's a limitation on that, because I, the case law that I reviewed on this issue indicates it all comes down to what the referendum question was and how it was proposed, what was in there. At, at this point, what your charter provides is that four years, a term of four years. I would say that if you moved it to, you know, three hundred and sixty-six days, that's a violation of the charter regardless of whatever the, the state law says. But it wasn't specific enough in the question that was raised, probably because this was not anticipated, that.
It wasn't the intent.
Within a range.
It wasn't the intent. When you say it wasn't to. My second comment is, is that I, I think by voting on this and not giving it back to the people to vote on, I, I really believe this is a slippery slope. Because why even have the Charter Review Committee that at any given time, we can change it? And let's be honest, I mean, everybody here wants to make more money. Four of us up here hasn't, haven't gotten a raise in four years. So what's to say that we don't bring it up next week, that we all get a ten percent raise, we vote on it? Now, how do you think the public is going to react to that? And that's basically what we've just done. If we vote yes on this, we've just got a ten thousand dollar raise for, for eight months, according to the calculations. So I, I just think that, you know, I think it's a very slippery slope we're going down that, you know, what's next? What's next that somebody wants to bring up to change the charter? The charter is our constitution. Charter is what we're, should be governed by and what we should be doing every day. If we need to change that, it's a policy change, it should go back to the people. Hopefully Supervisor of Elections will let us put it on to 2021 to let the most people vote on it, and then we'll know. We'll know where the people stand. So, you know, very, a lot of the times, we have things come up here, and a lot of the times, we say, we don't want to have that vote, or we don't want to discuss it. Heck, John and those guys in Community Development don't do traffic studies in the summer because of the people aren't here. So, you know, let's do it the right way, let's put it out to the people. If November is the time when we get the most votes, let them decide it in 2020. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Greg. Peter?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Anybody, members of council on the amendment? Amy?
Well, I just want to thank all the residents who have taken the time and the effort to think about this issue in a really remarkable way. I mean, I was very impressed by the emails that we got and the conversations I've had with people, and the things that they were concerned about. And I do, I do think that this is not just a matter of numbers. So on the substance of it, I think there's reason to be cons, be cautious about moving it from March to November without having a full hearing. So I agree with this amendment that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn had proposed, and I think we should allow the Charter Revision Committee to review it first of all, and to bring, and to, and to review the issues that have been brought up by our citizens, and then have them vote on them. If they think that it's more important to, you know, save some money, and it's clear there'll be a savings, but not every single year, it just depends if there's no other thing going on in March, and that they're willing to have us extend our terms by eight months, then the people will tell us. And then, you know, I, I think we'll be free. And I don't see the problem with, since it's not going to cost us any additional, at least for the March 2020 election, why we can't just take the time to have it, have a full hearing and, and then we'll see what the, what the people say. And I, I mean, I really think we've gotten a really remarkable response from people. I, I thought only, I mean, who's going to talk about good government, which is basically what this is all about? It's not the kind of thing that people get too excited about, but some of the people are pretty strongly voicing their opinion. So I think we should respect it and let other people speak also through the voting, the vote.
Great, thank you. Counsel? Okay, there's been an amendment offered, it's been seconded, and if we could reread the amendment, and then I want to make sure a yes vote is yes in support of the amendment and a no vote is no against the amendment.
So you, you have an initial motion and a second to approve the ordinance as it stands. The amendment would be to make the ordinance effective upon a referendum question in March 2020, along with the other Charter Review amendments. At that point, if that is approved, the effect of that would be that those, those districts two, four, six, and the mayoral seat will still run for March 2020. But the districts one, three, and five, if, if the referendum question is approved, they will get an extension of eight months to November for 2022.
Correct.
So that would be the, so that's the, the amendment is to change the effective day of the ordinance till there's a referendum question. The effect of that is several districts will still have to run in 2020. And those, those other ones, which I'm sure we will make it clear at that point at the referendum question, those other districts would get extended to 2020, in 2022.
And we're going to vote on the amendment first, correct?
And if the amendment fails, the original motion still stands.
And a yes vote on the amendment is in support of the amendment?
Correct.
And no vote on the amendment is no against the amendment?
The amendment.
Okay. Yes, Greg?
Is it germane to ask a, or guess, put an amendment to the amendment, just to say in there?
You, as, as pointed on the green chair, you can make an amendment to the amendment.
Well, my, my question is, is, is I would like to have it in November of 2020 instead of March, because that is when Supervisor of Elections has said that's the best voter to have. If it is not possible, can it, just let, have it revert back to?
Well, the bottom line is it'll go to Charter Review, we can come back, and the council will be able to make the decision at that time.
Yeah, because the, the, the unclear effect of that would be that you would still be extending those seats till 2020 in November, and, and they, we're going to run in March, but then get, no, it doesn't work, it would have to be in March.
Peter, if I might say one thing, which is that, I, I forgot the point, it came to me when Derek was speaking, which is, this then also deals with that 2022 issue, the sixty thousand dollar issue. This would allow that election to be moved to November.
Derek, do you want to recap the amendment?
The amendment is to make the ordinance effective as a referendum question upon a positive vote of referendum in March 2022, along with the Charter Review questions.
Okay, so there's been a motion for amendment, and there's been a second. Counsel, is there further discussion?
Yes.
Greg?
This is, with the approval of the Charter Review Committee to accept this as part of the Charter Review.
No.
If, it's regardless of what the Charter.
Can I say, was this my amendment?
Yes.
It, it's city coun, it's eventually city council's decision. All the Charter Review Committee does is make recommendations, just like a zoning board. And they're.
But it's going to go to them?
Come, and that's the beauty of it. They can deliberate and make good suggestions, maybe they'll come up with something else that makes even better sense. But it comes back to this council for decision. It's not what they decide, they make a recommendation.
Gotcha.
And unless the council takes action to repeal the ordinance or change the effective date of it before that, it will go, it'll go effective upon referendum.
Okay. Counsel, we're voting on the amendment. There's been an amendment offered and a second. A yes vote is in support of the amendment, a no vote is against the amendment. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
No.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Yes.
Okay.
The amendment fails.
The amendment fails. There's also a motion on the table to accept this, and it's been seconded, as written. Is there further discussion on that, counsel?
I think we've set our pace.
Right, I was just going to say in here again, a yes is in support and a no is opposed against. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
No.
Councilman Duit?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Doyle, thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to public comment. Derek, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else. I have all the direction.
Okay, that's, okay. Public comment, members of the public that would like to speak on any item, please come forward.
Yeah, right. Good evening again.
Good evening.
You know, that's very interesting, and you know, I hope, I know a lot of people watch this on ninety-eight, but there's nothing like local issues, because let's face it, we all can control what happens in our city much better than we can even at a county and state, and forget federal. I mean, you don't feel you have a voice there, but we really have a voice here, and it's great to hear all the comments. But anyway, having said that, Kathy McGrath. I wanted to let you know, I've told Amy this already, of those of you who've been wondering when the BSU water tower is going to finally be gone, well, I was at the meeting last night, and it's going to be down very soon. The problem was, the people that are demolishing it, because it's in wetlands and mangroves, there were a lot of little issues they had to take care of before they could just go tromp in there and remove it, so. And as I jokingly told Amy, and as any old pilot will know, even older than me, that's how they used to navigate. You know, they'd see a water tower, oh, Bonita Springs, I know where I am, there's, believe it or not, that's the truth. But anyway, the thing that came to talk about today is, I was at a Downtown Alliance meeting recently, and we were talking about our police and everything, and it was very interesting, because I don't know where I've been, but obviously, the substation that used to be in Springs Plaza hasn't been there for about fifteen months, and I was not aware of it. But we all know that the little substation next to the banyan tree there is very inadequate for what we need here in Bonita for our community policing, so the, let's face it, when most, this was brought up too, when Mosaic finishes their development, you know, it's right near the school, and let's face it, our new library is going to be there. We really need to have the people, the police closer. So something I'd like you to kind of think about that might come up in the future pretty soon, let's face it, I think maybe by July, the library will be moving, excuse me, from their old location to the new one, and I think that would be a perfect place to use as a substation. that would be a perfect place to use as a substation. So, when the time comes, I know there's probably other people who have ideas. It's a big building, a lot of parking, but it's fairly close to downtown. So, I'd just like to have you keep that under consideration if you think about it. Okay? Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Bonnie, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Bonnie Widmore. I live in Benita, and I love it. All I would encourage you to do, it's okay to have yea and nay votes, but when we go back, like I'm on my Board of Directors for my community, I would like the city to seriously think about something in a format or how we can explain what you just voted on to them. Because after listening to all of that, there's no way in hell I can do that. But I think you, you own the communication to the people about what you all just said. So somehow think about that, and I suggest sooner rather than later, has nothing to do with snowbirds or those of us who are here full time. And the only other thing is I have to compliment the city on the fountain, and Goodbred Grocery looks wonderful. It's no longer an eyesore, right Mike? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bonnie. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Ben Hershinson, I'd like to suggest I'm having a comment that's not to be debatable, but who knows. You did a great job. I think I understand what you did, but I'll figure it out when I get home. I want to say this, I attended both workshops that were conducted by, again, essentially under the aegis of the city, and specifically the Department of Community Development. And it was superb. The first one we had in January, the place was standing room only, didn't quite work for workshops, but there were separate groups, well-conducted. And I just want to congratulate the Office of Community Development for doing a great job, because they had a number of their staff out there, you know, holding the tables. It worked very well. I think Jackie Jensen did a great job orchestrating, you know, telling people, come on, move, let's get along here because you're taking too much time. It worked out very well. The comments were extremely positive. And again, I just want to commend the community development for doing that. And I say, give them all a raise. I mean, really, you got, you did a great job, folks, and Arlene, everybody. I was quite impressed. Very well organized, and you should, I just want to let the council know you should commend them all, because they did a super job.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move along. We are, City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
Great. Thank you, Derek. City Managers Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We'd like to bring before you, and I'd like John Dahmer to come forward. We are at the completion with DPZ of the Phase One of the Form-Based Code, and we'd like approval this evening from Council to set the actual table of contents. This will lead to the next phase. Additionally, this would be in the process of replacing the old 41 overlay within the Land Development Code with this table of contents. So if the framework that's displayed here is consistent with the vision of Council, then we would be able to move on to the next phase.
Okay, great. Thanks, Arlene. Hi, John.
Good evening.
Welcome.
She stole all by thunder. This is, what you have in terms of the table of contents, this is where they're going to build all of their regulations. This is how they work. If they know that you are pleased with this format and this outline, they can take it from there and work their way through the process. You also have an outline for the timeline going forward from tonight, if you approve this, so you'll know how each step will progress. So, I'm here for any questions, otherwise, I think you've been well informed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve second. Questions, Amy?
Yes, ma'am, it's just less legible. When I brought it into PowerPoint, I thought I kept the same numbering, but that must have been my mistake.
Just trust them.
It's, that would, that would be a mistake from the person operating the computer.
The form that's attached within the green sheet is the correct, the form that's on, attached to the green sheet is the correct table of content. That's not correct, the form that's attached to the green sheet.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy?
If I understand this, the reason why we're going to approve this, because this is what they're going to work on, basically. And I thought under Section Two, should we have one, a separate transect or district for what I call the river district or the bamboo property? Or how would that fall in here?
I think that would either go under the transect zone districts, or under 2.05 or the other to be determined.
Okay. Well, I just would make a point that I think we should have a separate section for that particular thing. Anything along the river, which I think would take a different kind of approach than maybe some of the other areas.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also believe that's part of the government property as well, that they're looking at a separate transect for that.
Okay.
Inclusive of that.
And then I just have a question. I don't understand what Section 10 is at all. What are they talking about here?
Well, I think that those are going to be projects that have been previously approved and received zoning approval from Council. So those projects that have planned developments, Mosaic would be an example of that, Terry Street Assemblage, those would be incorporated in as they were approved by Council.
So it's for exists, already existing projects? It's not a Form-Based Code that would be applied to planned development?
Nothing new. This would be for things that have already received entitlements.
Historic thing.
Yes, ma'am.
We had direction from Council that any pre-approved, that were in the process will retain their rights through the process. So this would have to integrate in coordination with the, with those planned developments.
That's good. I didn't understand how you could possibly have something for new, so it's just for the, and everything else seems fine for me.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Greg?
Just piggybacking on that, John, how long is that good for? Is it to determine the LDOs or whatever like that? Let's choose longitude or latitude, whichever one's right there?
The standard planned development duration.
Okay, so if it expires, that expires with it?
Correct. And I think there's going to need to be some language in there that addresses expirations or modifications.
Great, thank you.
Well, Terry Street had a separate deal on that.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm thinking more so, because hopefully they're going to start here soon, but I mean, latitude, longitude, whichever one is downtown, I forget which one it is.
I got the same problem.
Yeah, right there across from the Pots for Art place. Something to do with an eclipse.
Counsel, other questions or comments? Fred?
Yeah, I said this before, and I think we still want to do it. And that is, is there a rapidness? First of all, we ought to look at it before it goes to the legal people to make it legalese. And secondly, I still think, particularly the Terry Street project, but even the Mosaic, even though those are approved projects, I would like to see and know out front before we approve it, if you put that code as the envision on those, what can't they do that they now got approval for, and what things would be a plus that they could do. And that, that will give, I think Council has a right to know that before you vote on this thing.
I don't disagree, but I mean, if we've already voted on it.
No, no, no.
I don't want to take it back, so I mean.
So you know what you're getting. A bunch of words, if you can apply those words to a project you're already approved and say, okay, now, if this was in effect, you can't do this, you can't do that, but you could do this, that's worth knowing. Because that's, that's a major project. And Mosaic, I, I'd just like to see how much better it would be if we had it. It isn't going to cost us a lot of money, but we, and it's a good exercise, because I guarantee you, out of that, there'll be some changes. Because that would be a project that you get to apply it to that don't count, but we still see what would happen to it, if we get a presentation.
Counsel, other questions? Greg?
I, I mean, I just don't, I don't see the great benefit to it, because each one of them, each project's going to, going to stand on its own, on its own thing, whether we, up or down. So I mean, well, at that time, we'll know what the benefit is or isn't. And so, I mean, I, I mean, I don't have a real dog in a fight, I don't care, just for saving money and time. I know at the February meetings, we wanted to speed this up. If this slows it down by any means, I'm not for it at all.
I agree with that.
And just, Councilman Forbes, just so you know, if you want us to take a look at it, we can work with you on it.
I don't mind, I'm just saying.
Anybody's free to chat with community development and ask whatever questions they have.
That's no problem.
I was going to mention this at the end, but it kind of fits in here. So I'm off a two-day workshop sponsored by FDOT on Form-Based Code. And I'll talk a little bit about it later, but one thing of interest is, they kind of signed me up for these tutorials on this thing, nine hours worth, okay, with quizzes, talking about flashbacks. But the first, whatever they call it, module, is introduction to Form-Based Code would be great to make that available to every member of Council. Because it's, you know, some of what Galena has been here saying, but I will tell you, it's very well done. And Sean was there also, and he actually said community development has a subscription to that, whatever it's called, Planetizen. So if you can somehow make that available to Council, whoever wants to watch it, obviously, but I thought it was really, it was well done.
We can email out a link.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel? Mike?
Yeah, just have a question. Section seven is for signage. There's only 7.01 sign design. Is that all-inclusive, everything to do with signs for the downtown area?
Wait until I turn the page, hold on one second. Yes, sir, that would be inclusive of all the regulations.
Everything, the sandwich words.
Correct.
Everything, everything that has to do with signs that pertains to downtown will all be in one spot.
And I think that they somewhat listed that when they put standards and tables. So all the regulations for all signs would be included there.
Counsel, anything else? We want to vote on this?
Yes, we'd like some direction, so we can move to the next.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Derek, anything to add?
No, there already was a motion and a second.
Fair enough.
I think you already got the votes right there.
Do I need to amend it then?
All right, my apologies, there's already been a motion and a second, so we'll, yeah, that's all right. We'll definitely march forward. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duit?
Aye.
Councilman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, very good. Arlene or Matt, anything else?
Yes, additionally, staff has been working with Dr. Margaret Banyan with FGCU on the continuation of our year amendments, our state required amendments, as well as the optional amendments. And we will be bringing forward information to have a workshop with City Council, a presentation by Dr. Banyan during a regular City Council meet on April 3rd. But on that same Wednesday, Dr. Banyan will have open office hours during the day for any residents or businesses that like to have an individual meeting with her as well, and the group. And then we will be looking for a public workshop the following evening, Thursday, April 4th, from 5:30 to 8:30. And we will be conducting that workshop at the high school.
Okay, great.
And additionally, in the last meeting, Council had asked staff to work with Carol Green and Ashley Stayskull regarding our legislative priority process. Both Carol and Ashley emailed out a timeline of the process we're in. Understand, we're in the most fluid section right now for the next two weeks. Well, we understand where we lay in the process of budgeting. From that point on, they'll be laying out a format of the appropriate folks to call at the appropriate time, and sending that to all of Council through email, keep us in the process. Additionally, we talked about long-term goals of understanding the process, maybe a year-long process of strengthening relationships and communicating our, all of our strategic goals year-round. So we'd like to do, after the legislative session in May, as the legislature's legislative members come back, we'd like to have a workshop with Carol and Ashley, with the Council, and have some strategic planning for a whole year out of when we'll start, making engagements, what we can do here locally along the way, how we can build relationships continually throughout the whole year, so that they're hearing our message all year long, so they're prepped when they go to Tallahassee with that message.
Great, thank you. Amy?
I just want to thank you so much for orchestrating that. It's something that I have been interested in, and I, other members of the Council also. And when we had our last startup meeting, that was on the list to try to get this structured in such a way so we could all be more effective and helpful to, you know, to the Council people who have reached out. So I think you're going down a great path, and please thank Carol for participating in that. I look forward to doing that kind of thing. You've done a great job there.
So the timing for this legislative session, we're going to continue on, and we'll keep updates, and we'll be sending out updates to all of Council, and we'll, and there'll be a call for your assistance at the appropriate times. And then we'll start in May, the plan out for the entire year. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
That's all my items.
Okay, wonderful. Matt, anything?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay. Dynamite. Okay, we are going to move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports. We can do this in a different format if we choose to. If anybody has something, no, I mean, we can certainly try a different format if it's preferred. All right, Fred. I'm looking at you, Amy, but Fred, you have anything for us tonight?
You see out of the back of your head? Big, two little things. One is that the Florida League of Cities chapter, that's called the Southwest Chapter, it's got Marco Island, Naples, Benita, Estero, Fort Myers Beach, Sanibel, Cape Coral, Punta Gorda, and then La Belle, always La Belle. They, they had a changing of the guard, and Bill Ribble, the Vice Mayor of Estero, is the president of the chapter. And I'm number two as Vice President, and that happened because Rachel Kessling, who was the Mayor of Punta Gorda, lost an election. And so she moved out, and we had to have new, but we are, we're in a rotation. And it's not like MPO where it automatically goes around the table to all the cities. It's, it's who got elected. So I'm Vice President, and if something would happen and I would leave that office, it doesn't mean that whoever would replace me from Benita as Vice President, because that's a different, it's not a batting order thing, where you're in a batting order and it just goes around the table, so.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Peter?
Just a little bit more about that meeting that FDOT sponsored. We're really, I know Pete, you know this, and Fred, and they'll fly over days, we're really blessed to have Billy, and now L.K., and the direction that's being set for District One. And so they had about 60 people from all over the district at this two-day seminar on, with respect to these zoning issues. But one of the very interesting things that Deborah Chestnut, who had organized it from FDOT, said is that they are concerned about community success. Mention coming at, at a FDOT, as opposed to just like Paradise. And obviously, safety. So, you know, their buzzword, which is a Form-Based Code buzzword, is context-sensitive, that when they do things now, they want to be listening to the community and what the community wants. Then the other thing, some of us would get a kick out of our former, a former district head, Billy Hadaway was there, and he recounted the flyover situation, and what a pleasure it was to deal with us who were opposed to it. Not the exclusion of other people, but it was good to hear. And he's doing very well in Orlando.
Wonderful. Thanks, Peter. Laura?
Monday, the 11th, there is a, I might be taking your point, but the fire station is going to have a Phoenix ceremony. And if you haven't been to one, they're very moving and so phenomenal. So at 5 o'clock at the main fire station, there's a Phoenix ceremony on Monday, the 11th.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Laura. Greg?
Just to add to that, there's also a historic award, which, what they both are, what these are, is the Phoenix Award is we revive somebody who was clinically dead. And the historic award, we gave someone, we gave birth, we didn't give birth, we assisted a woman to giving birth, and we basically caught the baby, cut, and did that. So we're doing both. We're doing both on Monday.
Good thing.
Thank you, Greg. Amy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. I just want to give some brief comments, because I've asked, I've spoken with Arlene, and we are, at our next meeting, we're going to set aside some time, kind of for a full briefing with the Sister City Program with Isla Mahares, Mexico. But I traveled down there over the weekend, and Monday, we signed, reciprocated with the signature of Isla Mahares, Mexico, along with a representative from Benita Springs Utilities, and a representative from Casa, Mexico. The Lee County School Board was not able to attend, but they will be involved in our, they're being invited to our next meeting for an English-to-Spanish, Spanish-to-English program with the schools. And Tiffany Esposito from the Chamber was not able to attend, nor her, I guess, Board of Director Chair, but they will be invited to participate. And I'll give you the bottom line. The water, clean water is their environment, because it has everything to do with tourism, just like the clean water here has everything to do with our tourism. And when you look at the Gulf of Mexico from that side, and you're standing on the shore, and you see light green water that you can see to the bottom of, and then the water gets a little bit darker, it gets a little bit more blue, and then further out, it gets real blue. And you have two or three shades of water in the same Gulf of Mexico that we share. And you ought to see the tortugas, the turtles. You would be better off to mess with a politician, and that's probably tongue-in-cheek than a turtle, just very similar to here. So we're going to see, we're going to hear about water, we're going to hear about the environment, we're going to hear about education, we're going to hear about Spanish-to-English, we're going to hear about English-to-Spanish. And we are going to hear about the mayor's next visit, which I believe will be next month, for the City of Benita Springs Mayor Cup Soccer Tournament. So, certainly going to be a lot more information. We got back last night, flew into Fort Lauderdale, so I figured I would give the team that accompanied me and the team that was not able to personally be there, that will, but will be involved at kind of a two weeks' notice. And we are going to, is Addison within earshot, or? a two-week's notice, and we are going to, is Addison within earshot, or somebody that's technically savvy, the Mayor of Isla Maharis will be joining us via Skype or whatever program like that, so he wants to see us, he wants to talk to us, he wants to hear our questions, he wants to hear our ideas, and I'm looking forward to that, and that will be two weeks from today at our next Council meeting. And I also want to commend Governor DeSantis, I want to continue with the picks that he's making for the South Florida Water Management District, we heard that update earlier from Mayor Ruane, and so many others that have been involved with this for so many years. I use this expression, and I'm probably going to say it wrong, but I finally feel like the star, the moon, and the planets and the earth are all aligning, and if there's ever an issue that should be nonpartisan, it's this issue, and I feel finally we're getting there. We've all been in this together, team, you've been wonderful with this, keep on it, keep on it, keep on it, the ice is cracking, I think the ice has cracked, to be honest with you, and it's like a spring thaw, and I think it's, things are happening that haven't happened in a good number of years, at obviously, the local level, the state level, the federal level, and quite frankly, at the White House, because we have a governor that has the ear of the President of the United States. So be that as it may, keep up the great work, team, and I have no further comments. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we are going to go to the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to approve, roll call please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment, last call on public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? Councilmember Jason Mon from Sanibel, welcome, thank you for joining us.
For the record, Jason Mon, Councilman from Sanibel, Sanibel resident, come down to visit the Sister City, and it's lovely to see that all of you suffer similarly, except you get paid. Kevin and I were enjoying very much listening to whether you're going to vote for another $10,000 as that was framed up. But first of all, I'd like to compliment your Public Works Department, who certainly put the AC in HVAC, it's very cool here. I said, my God, I could look terrified, up here shaking, freezing. And I also wanted to say in passing, it was from an earlier matter, but the Purple Heart Highway, and I happen to be wearing the band myself, we really look forward to receiving that letter from this Council and would like to get on board, it was, we just got made, following this good city, a Purple Heart City, on Tuesday at our Council meeting, god, is that yesterday, it's fine, but, so we appreciate the leadership that Benita Springs showed, and we're also very pleased to be one ourself. The reason I've come today and just to swing by, for which you'll see me around a lot, I like to keep my finger on the pulse, and we roll through the Council meetings throughout the district. And the reason I do that is because I filed last week to run for District 76 for the House seat, representing Benita Springs, Estero, Iona, Sanibel, Captiva, and Fort Myers Beach. I'm extremely fortunate to have the endorsement and support of my own mayor and my own City Council, as well as the Mayor of Fort Myers Beach, the Sheriff, and State Attorney, Mayor Fox, and a lot of other people in the county. And a lot of that comes from a demonstrated, well, quite an effort for results. Results for our county are what I really care about, and when it comes to politicians and public officials, I think, bless you, the most important thing is to get results and go home, it's for, literally for the good of the order, if you want to put it that way. And that's what we spent the last year, myself, Chauncey, Anthony Farhad, as well as Sawyer Smith, resolved in April that we were backing a governor who forswore sugar, and I met with them in early April and said, all I want is that the Water Management District gets replaced, and I'm sure not because I don't think that they're nice people or anything else, but I don't think they're representing the people that they're there to represent. And that has been the problem, the loggerhead at the executive level that's gotten in our way is the Water Management District, literally showing up to their meetings as a photo opportunity for them, and not anything that's going to resolve our current water issues. And we were together, both of us, at the inauguration, and it was literally before I could get home, he was down here coming through on his word, and I said, if anything, I was ever owed anything, it's all paid off. They did a crackerjack job, and to get Chauncey in there is super, because not only is he just a good man and a solid citizen, and the son of our first mayor and the people who incorporated Sanibel, reducing its density from the projected 90,000, Lee County had us to 6,000, which has saved our island quite honestly. But he's a policy guy who understands, and I don't want people in there who are wild-eyed environmentalists or sugar people, I want normal, rational, reasonable people who can give us a fair shake, because that's what we've missed. We missed that in a lot of our legislative actions, and we missed that at the administrative level. The issue regarding Water Management District has been resolved as far as I'm concerned, and I went through 2,000 pages, may I extend it a little longer?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. When that lease came out, I got the first public records request and spent a long couple of days reading over 2,000 pages of versions of that lease in their native form in order to find the specific comments that said, it's redundant to mention we're going to build the EAA on this area of land. That was a horror as far as, and when I could see the Water Management District concurring with that decision, that was more or less the end for all of them, and I think that was clear that they were not working for the citizens at all, that they were in the back pocket of others. I'll sort of close by simply saying, I'm ruthlessly focused on two issues, and it's the same two things that have always mattered to me. As an attorney on Sanibel, as somebody who's been out there for 40 years, has been in the same neighborhood when I moved here from Ireland, and a graduate from Bishop Verro's class of '89, I, the water quality and the way I grew up, when all of us had johnboats before we had cars, and that you wandered up to somebody's dock and shouted up, can Pete come out and play, and if he's in trouble, Dad shouts out, get the hell off my dock, and you motor away, this was a normal thing. Now you have people who were terrified about putting their children in water. That's at an unacceptable level, and that's where we have to act, and I don't like to use the word rise up, but it just calls for a determination and an alacrity when dealing with the situation that's more important than anything else that we're going on, because if we don't solve that issue, our economy's going to suffer, we'll have a micro-recession, and the people in Northern Florida may be fine, but the people in this county, in this district specifically, are the ones that are going to suffer irreparable harm, simple as that. So the two things that will save us from that is, one, representation will stand up and say, this is insanity, we're not fracking in Benita Springs, we're not drilling on Sanibel, there are places to do that, and I'm not against the Dakotas if they want to frac, I think it's super, that's their resource, that is not our resource. Tourists pay taxes for our citizens, and we can't have them disappearing. And the final thing is, is to ensure that this area maintains its identity, home rule has to be our watchword. This business of you can end-run societies along the coast by picking up a couple of legislators and having them preempt an issue, so now you only have to talk to, how many votes you need, and you don't need to care about any of the towns, because anything they come up with, be it a plastic straw ban, which our citizens and our businesses were behind, so we went ahead and did it, I actually drafted it, and I wasn't thrilled by myself, but I went out and talked to everybody, and they said, no, we're starting to do this ourselves. Well, when you get, can you make successes like that, where you have the trust and acceptance of the citizens, and people say, we want to take this stop, damn my eyes, if I'm going to have people in Tallahassee turn around and tell the people of Benita Springs or in Sanibel, you cannot do what you think is best and what you want your people to do in your communities. And that's really what this race is about for me anyway, and I appreciate very kindly the time to come and speak tonight.
Thank you Councilman, thank you for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I just wanted to add that the Mayor sent a flag for us, which will be here at the appropriate spot, Arlene, I'll leave that to you, maybe Matt, Matt's pretty good at decorating and finding spots for good things, but the flag is, will be donated here to City Hall on behalf of Isla Maharis. And Council, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, we are adjourned, thanks everybody.